All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome. Let's go to call to these meeting to order at approximately 10:00 or 4:00 AM. Good all, please rise and join me in the pleasure.
Ladies to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time we move on to item C, a document to lose agenda. Any discussion or comment on that? Seeing none, public's in favor? Any thoughts? This document is in agenda, heard. Do not leave a public comment on any item not currently listed on today's agenda. Is there any public comment at this time? There are forms in the back, if you just pass them over, we appreciate that. And again, that's not on me, I'm not in the agenda, but the opportunity for a public comment on the agenda. Now we proceed to the meeting today. If not seen any public comment, we'll move on to item E, discussion items. Item number one, staff and parent and student communications. Unfortunately, after last week, although I look at it as much more a stay of execution than victory, it will be an ever-alowing status of the school as we work with MCOE on the various issues that are presented to us. And it's important that we maintain consistent and clear communication with all of you. I want to make sure there are opportunities for the board to need you a couple times in January. We already have our standing board meeting that will happen at the end of January, but I want to make sure there's another opportunity to meet. So I wanted to raise that with our board today to come to some consensus on what that might look like. Of course, we will use the Aries Communication System to make sure we are providing updates to you on a weekly basis, even if it's just to say not much has changed. But I highly doubt that. I think, like I said, there will be constant movement on a lot of these issues, and we want to make sure you're as aware of that as possible. There's a lot to do in the month of January, if we are to be able to move forward in terms of managing our books, moving forward with our own business services, and making sure we understand how we're going to continue to meet payroll and our expenses for the rest of the school year. So my proposal is that we do a weekly communication from this board through the Aries system. We post a link of that on our social media platforms. But I'd like to talk about scheduling a potential forum with parents, not necessarily a board meeting, but a potential forum with parents that obviously only a subset of us could be at, but that Mrs. Burns would call when we can support her in. So any ideas on that in terms of calendar that I'd like to hear now, or anybody disagree with that, or like to do more or less, I'd like to hear from the board.
I just have a little idea. Any idea I am wanting to get for information for parents? That we can get together, we can have a meeting, we can help give us board members access and maybe what issues are still not addressed during the meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you for volunteering, and appreciate you before with that. So board numbers, we hope on Mac and Mac will do that effort, and certainly before our next board meeting will be the goal. Any additional comments or ideas aside from a weekly digital update? And obviously, if major things come forth sooner, we will reach out before that, aside from the weekly update. Any comments, ideas, questions?
No, I agree, I think it's good. Especially as people are reviewing the communication stuff, I think having the Aries Communication give that out there, I think would help the parents kind of just stay in touch until September, but I totally agree.
Thank you, Ms. Rosebrow.
I agree.
Appreciate your, appreciate your power here. Any additional comments?
I just felt to thank the parents and families and everyone who, the sacrifice of their day to be here, to have been at the board meeting, for a lengthy board meeting at MCOE, that does not go unnoticed. We know that you have lots of other things that are present this kind of year of stuff. And so, I think also, any feedback that you have that you can sort of do offline to let us know, how can we continue to need you here to these meetings? Because keeping you informed and up to date with things is really, really important to us. I think in the absence of communication, people, you tend to fill in the blanks, and there's a panic, there's, or the possibility of panic, there's a possibility for people to fill in the blanks with misinformation. So we're very, very appreciative of you getting here to get that information first to come.
I was unable to make the meeting at county office for personal reasons, but I was so pleased to see the current paper of all of you that were there. I think that I do, we can go as far as we can possibly go this way. I also appreciate your continued commitment to this program. I look forward to follow you, try to see how we're doing.
Now for the most important comments or questions on this item. Any comments on this item from any of you here in the audience today? Strike in the back and then from you. Now?
I'm just hoping we can hear on a day to come, Tuesday, my work schedule, I work every single Tuesday, hopefully helping parents every day to meet with parents.
To meet with parents?
Yeah.
And is that the current time of PTO meetings? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, evening. So I'm always working, you know, the meetings, if anything's happening on Tuesday, I can't make it. So another day of the week, Wednesday, Thursday, something like that, I would really appreciate that.
Okay, another day of the week, something to consider.
I think all we will do during the day, a couple of days at a time, is also because I know some people can make it in the morning, some people can make it in the afternoon. So we'll be very sensitive with the students. But also for the meetings and the meeting on our, but.
Which I believe our students offered to set up.
Yes, we will.
Now?
I just wanted to make a comment about various communications. The oral portion, I'm beginning, it didn't start with the message or the word, it wasn't standard, so I don't know if it was in an email, but some people don't like her, and she just finds it.
Yeah, so like when they came out to the meeting on Monday, on Monday, it said we need the nine o'clock, the whole part about meeting at four thing, we already thought was the normal message.
Is there a way to check those? Is there like an edit on them, or are they here?
What I'll do is I'll call Aries, because that's definitely somehow functioned the program, because it's on, it's on the email portion and the text portion. That's what I heard about this morning, the first part, so I'll definitely call Aries.
I think you could use the option, sorry, to listen to it, and I think it was off park for that meeting. I think that was kind of set aside by the parents, that we're going to get together and make these things and stuff. I don't know if that actually, not on, on to Aries.
Because the Aries communication, the email, it was all the same.
Okay, thank you. The building, we'll make sure to check that. Any additional comments on this item? That's it, while with you guys, the weekly communications, again, there'll be a forum set up for parents, and then if there's anything major that happens in between those two communications, we'll also make sure to get that out. And do, Mrs. Burns, was there a communication already that went out regarding the occurrence of the Wednesday?
I did send out a message Wednesday night, and the vitamins are going to come today, so we can discuss in further detail about what we're going to do with the state.
Thank you.
I have one other question. I think it's imperative to be a lot more clear in the Aries messages, they're very vague. Over the past month, we've been very vague about meetings and the work program, and I think unless you're kind of, your students listening, or you're actually show up to meeting, really don't realize the importance of this meeting. So I think to have a longer description or even a link, to pay where you can read a longer description, to let parents know how important a certain situation may be there is.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, move on to item number two, business services. Mrs. Rosebrow, before I defer to you, I just want to be, I just want to be really clear with parents about part of our, of our issues, right, and where we stand now, and in our ability to respond to them, is really the design of the school is deeply flawed, right? A lot of the important oversight of the school and the back office work has been farmed out to MCOE for the longest time. And as long as we've been on their good side, that hasn't been a problem, but when it's not convenient for them, it becomes a problem. And sometimes it's not convenient for them simply because they're, they're too busy and we're a small client. But the fact that a school like this, an independent charter school, only have a principal, one person, charge with both meeting the day to day, and all the other stuff that is involved in running a charter, not just the school, but the organization of the school, right? Is, you know, that's why it's called superintendent principal. But a lot of those, a lot of that work, right, is the same whether you have 10 schools or you have one. And that's very problematic. And this board recognized that the minute we came on, Dr. Murphy, great principal, easy for the kids, almost all of our principals have worked themselves near to death because of the responsibilities that lie on their shoulders. It is way too much for one person and the small office thing that they possess. So what I want to be clear as we enter into this discussion, and I just really need to import upon the board and to all of you, that part of successfully responding to what the county is putting on us at this time, is going to really be our ability to get some people on board, to do some contract work in the short term, to dedicate some real time to this. We need to figure that out. If, if we don't, it can't fall on a working committee of this board. And that's essentially what's been happening for the last two years. This board meets a couple Saturdays in between, and we all have other jobs, what you know, well, oh, that's, even the ones that do, like Georgia, are still here, and they're practically employees themselves, and they've worked so hard for this organization. But that, that's just not enough, and you know, and especially when we're working often, unfortunately, against a county office of ed that has those resources, right? It has oftentimes used those resources to support us, but unfortunately, when those resources are turned against us as an authorizer, I mean, it's David and Goliath without a doubt, right? There's just so much know-how and resource there, and we just don't have that capacity. So that's a big part of this meeting today, and I just want to bring that for all of you, and certainly for the board, right? We really got to make some decisions. How do we get control of some of that cash and really put some professionals in place that can begin to go to work for us hard in January to make a clear path forward to the end of the year? It's got to be people who are dedicated and are paid to do it, quite frankly. And as much as we will leverage the volunteerism of our parents, right, I just got to tell you, it's, it's not going to be enough because of what we're facing against the county. And what I'm already seeing, and we've seen this through communications, and I want to read a couple to you, who we wanted to cite them, is, you know, what we've been feeling for the last two years, which is sort of the, the death by a thousand cuts, right? They tried, they tried the hammer, right? You guys fought it off, right? We stayed there off long enough, but without you guys showing up that day, they would gone right ahead and clo, and moved to not pay the teacher, right? It was all of you, and I want to just make that super clear, right? And we're so proud, right? It makes everything we've done so worth it. But it was you guys showing up that made that, that pushed them to make the decision they made. And you've heard them in their final comments, they're pissed about, they wanted their way, right? They deflected, oh, it's all of them, we fooled you guys into doing this. It, it, you know, I hope you guys see through that. But nonetheless, they've already started. We got, we got letters that night, the next morning, saying we need this due by this day. We're going to pull this out of this, you need to figure out how to pay us for this, right? So they're already starting, that machine is at work, trying to figure out how they can, in other words, achieve what they wanted to achieve a couple of days ago. And so, with those comments, I just wanted to really make that framing, and why this meeting is so particularly important. And again, really wanting to thank all of you for doing that, but also this board, I know how hard all of your boards, Mrs. Rosebrow, especially in the research you're about to present, again, this volunteer board, I couldn't be prouder to work with a, with a strong group, and I appreciate everything you guys have brought to the table. Mrs. Rosebrow?
Okay, thanks. So we have a couple of proposals to look at around five vendors, and in a few minutes, we'll conference in with one of those vendors who has made themselves available to answer our questions this morning. So I know that we, some of us had a chance to look at these proposals previously when we were talking about this a couple months ago, but I did email those to you again this morning. And I think we have a few copies available.
We don't have a paper.
Oh, okay. We have no paper, so.
There you go.
So we'll kind of talk it through against Florida, for the public. Okay. So.
We can do point three, and second round is around my projector.
The projector, the table is over there. Okay. I, what I was going to do, if it's okay, does everybody have their cell phone, and I can sit down in Aries communication?
Yeah.
Would that be okay? I think that'd be a lot easier for you guys to have it. Does everybody get with that?
Yeah.
So here, so I'm looking at Aries communication.
Just because we've got to move a lot of tools, we can project some.
Yeah. Okay, great, thanks. Finding solutions. Okay, so while we're waiting for that to happen, I do just want to note that I reached out to six different potential back office providers who are, their entire focus is providing back offices for our school. Of those six, there were, there was one that didn't factor in at all, two that aren't taking clients, one is out of our service area, and one said her name. And then, so the two proposals that we have kind of come in at a range of price. We have Icon Management, which is the company that Jacquetne mentioned to us about a year ago, that we've been looking into. She met one of their representatives at the CCSA conference. So they're now called Icon Management. We have their proposal. And I just want to note that while they come recommended from some sources, they don't come highly recommended from our CCSA conference. So they have a lower price, but potential for maybe not being as service.
May I?
Yeah.
Does everybody know what a back office provider is or?
Could you explain it?
Sure, yeah. So what we're essentially looking at is finding, finding a company that can handle our accounting operation, potentially our payable, all of the operational pieces that MCOE calls a business services. So that's paying our bills, writing checks, doing our bookkeeping, and presenting us with reports in a time like that. So that's, that's what that is. So if you are looking at the Icon proposal, I want to just direct your attention to page seven, that's where the proposal terms and pricing are. So they are offering us just a brief contract that would just be to the end of the school year, from June 30, 2019. Now, when I got these proposals, that was a few months ago, so we're looking at beginning November 1st, of course, all of these would be, all of the costs would shift to either a January 1st start or a February 1st start, and that's something that we need to discuss in a minute. So the Icon, Icon's proposal includes the transitional period to be an hourly rate. We would give them a retainer of $4,800, and they would charge against that. And then after that, it would be $4,800. So then the CSMC proposal, the fee that they're proposing is on page three of the proposal. And basically, they would charge us $5,000 a month, so it's pretty close in terms of monthly pricing. But they are also, they would also charge us a setup conversion fee of $15,000. Now, when I talked with their representative, I said, that's pretty stiff for us at this time. What are you, what are you going to do for it? And they said that that would be their maximum charge, and that they could potentially split it up into either two charges or three charges, so that, you know, we don't have to come up with $20,000 right off that. So given that that's the cap, that kind of helps a little bit, but it's still pretty So for this school year, we would be looking at, if we start in January with them, we're looking at $45,000, if we start in February, we're looking at $40,000. They also had some concerns about, they brought us some contact with them yesterday, to fill them in on where we are, both of, both of potential providers, to fill up, fill them out where we are with the county that we have finally received the go-ahead to remove our, to separate ourselves from the service supply. And one point that CSMC brought up is if we wait until January 1st to switch our payroll or that it could present some, some issues for our employees. It means that they're, you know, they don't file double paperwork, because they have two different services, it means that our employees will get two W2s, two 10,000 dollars. So that could, that all those issues are solvable, it's just something to think about. And it's generally much clearer to start at the beginning of the year. So that would be the first thing to do. Do we have time to do that? That's a big question. We're going to have to set up a bank account immediately, and we have to get the, anything that we, any information that we don't have, because that's the county.
Three weeks' time to meet us, Chris.
And the county is going on vacation from Tuesday until the second. So there's some issues that we have in that area. And like I said, the folks from CSMC are, I think, themselves available to conference with us, so they can ask some questions about that. Do you have any questions before? I think we'll get on line again.
I do. I know that one comes more earlier than the other. Besides that, are the services comparable? I noticed that they both offer grant writing support, but is there, are there any notable differences in kind of thing of that?
Nope, they're, they're really, they're really, they offer the same thing. The one thing I do want to point out, so Jennifer does a lot of the services that these packages provide, but that isn't really taken into account in the pricing. Either, so we might, we might want to think, you know, either reducing some of Jennifer's duties, which could create her up to, you know, have more time to focus on the other, her other millions of duties, or there may be some of that there.
So the purposes of us talking with them today is just as special, correct?
Yes.
In terms of an amount that, that we can consider achieving?
You know, they're not flexible, they're, they're not willing to negotiate their contract pricing. What we can ask, we can ask them questions about their services, and we can talk to them about how they see transfer housing of all forms.
My big question is how, what does payment look like during the transition? Is there a way for MCOE to block us from, or will there be funds? Are we actually getting any money, right? So I guess, and I don't know if we know the answers for that yet, I know Jennifer, you mentioned that there was a physical check coming to us, where Trula, that we can, rather than go to deposit through MCOE's, which is what we normally do, we could retain as we set up our bank accounts.
Right.
And use that initially as C funding to begin contracting these very, I think, vital services right now. Is that, is that sort of the thinking of how we get this accomplished? I just don't want to depend on the what ifs with the county.
Yeah, that is, that's exactly what I, what I was thinking, is that we would, yeah, use the SB 740 money that would be coming in, and we'd have to figure out how, how we get access to our LCAF portion of that money. Supposedly, you know, where we, it comes to us and then to the superintendent, but it doesn't sound like that's what's happening.
Do we get that first, or is there an address that the county goes to and it just kind of stays there? Jennifer?
Right, you mean our LCFS? My understanding, it goes directly into their, into their bank account.
It's electronic posting?
It's electronic posting into their, into their. Yeah.
But the SB 740 money is a physical check that comes with us?
Yeah.
Okay. Has that been received yet? Do we have that in possession?
No, we don't.
No?
We've been waiting for it, for, for, Jennifer's been tracking it.
So is there a way for us to track it, and not have to rely on the county to tell us that it's there? Is that what you mean, there's a way for us to track it here?
That we've been in contact with the state.
Yeah.
And Davis, who is at the State Department, and finding out when it's been sent. It goes directly to our post op, to our mailbox there at the county though, and that's part of the issue, of when their mail people decide to put it in their box. And that they're going to disclose that.
So the county will still have their hands on it? So.
I would like to suggest too, sort of, because we have some grassroots support, once the bank account is established, we can set up a go-buddy that deposits people's donations to the school directly into the bank account. Because we're a nonprofit, that is possible to set up, I think there's some support for that right now. I think before the year ends, people are donating right now for tax purposes as well. And just to get sort of brass tacks, if, if, if every family in the school were sort of responsible for donation, or giving donations of family, friends, strangers, whoever, $100 that will pay for the $10,000 switch over fees. So when you look at the every little bit counting, something like that could make a huge difference.
So I suggested we conference in quickly and ask our payroll questions, and then we can discuss all the other things that we need to talk about with this issue.
Do you have a meeting already this morning?
No, Michelle Archileta has reached out, so the purposes are done with U compliance, but not, we haven't had anything else, so. And that's, that's an item here, item number five.
Welcome. We're brought to you by FreeFlower.com. Free Flower, your best friend, and your best friend. If you want to help, please log in now, otherwise, it's Wednesday and we work in the house of happiness. Thank you. There is one company and one investment in this conference. Susan and Sarah.
Hi Nick, this is Londa with the rest of the Millennium Church High School Board and our constituents. Good morning. And unfortunately, we don't have our speaker here, but you're on speakerphone, so, yes.
Vaguely, if you could speak up as much as you can, we'd appreciate it. This was saying that the chair of the board, so, go ahead.
So Nick, we have taken a look at the proposals in front of us, and I let the board know that you and your team brought forward some potential issues in terms of transferring payroll over, and that you guys are available this morning to tell us, you know, a little more about that and answer any questions we have. We're working on getting a speaker. Oh, you know what, Nick? We're, Nick? We're working on getting a speaker because it's so faint, I'm sorry. Our usual speaker is a little close. We're working on getting one right now. Sorry, what? No, that doesn't seem to be working, but how about we do a call, a local? Oh, we have one. Excellent, okay. It's a lot of square, it's a C and I type that. Okay, Nick, can you hear us? I think we can, can I hear you? It's a little better, I think we're on the maximum now, so.
No difference.
Okay, it's still kind of faint, but we're going to roll. Okay, great, thank you.
If you're going to have to repeat, you can.
Okay, Nick, can you hear us? I think we can, can I hear you? It's a little better, I think we're on the maximum now, so.
No difference.
Okay, it's still kind of faint, but we're going to roll. Okay, great, thank you. We are having such a tough time.
All right, so I want to respect everybody's time, and I don't know that we'll be able to do this today.
Yeah.
So what I'm, I want to go in and move us along, but what I'd like to do is, if we can collect some questions from the board at this time regarding this item, the working group will continue to move forward. And I really want to thank Linda for bringing these opportunities to us. It's important, and we have a professional group. Somebody who can be dedicated with it to looking at this issue. The idea of a back service provider that works with charters already, is that they have a lot of experience and can help us maneuver some of the hurdles that we're going to be experiencing with the county as we move forward. There was another option that we have been discussing.
So Nick, I'm going to say goodbye to you right now, and I'll give you a call back in a little while. Okay, thank you for my questions.
So team, let's, I want to go down, and if you have any permanent questions, we can put those with Jennifer and make sure that we have those for future discussion with CSMC at this time. Richard, do you have any questions for our backups?
Please. For potential, for those, for Sam, please.
Yeah.
Agreed, miss. So would we form a subcommittee like this, or do we make a decision, or?
So there's already a working group, a finance working group, right? And that's, you know, Linda's sort of taken the lead on this particular item, there's been so many to work on. So that's sort of been their charge, and that's what she's presenting today as sort of the fruits of that labor. And hopefully, we're hoping to be able to ask similar questions directly to the provider. Again, technology doesn't always cooperate, so. The idea would be then, hopefully, you ask them what, if there's questions you really don't have the answer to right now, we can ask those after the meeting, to make sure that they're answered prior to bringing a potential contract before the board for signature, or a potential two-recognition like you said earlier. Okay?
I want to say, I haven't had a chance to really fully look through all of your, maybe some questions later on. I just want to know if you're able to, if I have a question, if you have a question to prior to your take some before, that you can come back to all of this, I can ask around now. Earlier, you had, when you were talking even more about, about the back services provider, you said to me that maybe it's best to start at the beginning of the school year, you know, instead of, instead of from the middle. Is there another, so is there another option that maybe you're thinking of, maybe that you have to kind of give us through this school year, instead of doing it with that office provider? Now, you don't have to give it to us, I probably just want to know if there's another option there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Okay.
One of our chair, is there another option as well?
We'll get to that in just a minute.
Yeah, it's a timing issue for me, related to understanding the services that are being provided, and the dollar amounts that could possibly fund that. And so we don't want to get ahead of any type of recommendation moving forward unless we know that the money is secure for us to afford the service.
Okay. Gordon?
I agree with, yeah, everybody that we're making.
Well, we'll get to that public comment. Mr. Cooling and I had brought up during our working group discussion, another alternative. Again, Jennifer has a lot of, Mrs. Ivara has a lot of in-house expertise, again, but so much to do to leave to one person. Our very own Mrs. Rosebrow, also, who's not just our treasurer by mistake, right? She brings a lot of expertise, because that's what she does for a living, as a chair official, an accountant, okay? And Mr. Cooling, I asked Ms. Rosebrow if this is something she could come on as a contractor, working in tandem with Mrs. Ivara. Again, that would be far less expensive, potentially. Again, we haven't gone down this road, but it would require her to resign as a board member. And, you know, immediate, the immediate benefits to that are familiarity with the problem. We wouldn't have to catch her up very much. And again, potentially cheaper. The downside is, is that we would lose a board member. And, and you know, even though the back office is much more expensive, they also come with a lot of resources. And so, that's not to say, again, we couldn't do it. And the real question to Mrs. Rosebrow as far would be, is this, is this really manageable in this short timeframe? And again, there's pros and cons to any of the situations, but if there's an idea out there. And before we go to public comment on this, is there anything you wanted to add to that, Mrs. Rosebrow?
Yeah, so Jennifer and I haven't had a chance to discuss this. She's been, she's been ill. Only time to heal. But I, I do feel like, you know, we have worked together on a lot of things, and to work well together. I did kind of look at a few things last night. I didn't consider this seriously until, really, until yesterday. So I did kind of look through it, think about a few things last night and then in the morning. I feel like I, that this would require about, you know, 10 hours a week from that county. And so, you know, I think we would be looking at about $20,000 a year. That's what I would charge, because I love it as well. And then we would need to make sure that we have a payroll package. P is great, no problems with them, I love them. And I checked in with them this morning, and we'd be looking at about $2,700 a year with them. And then of course, we would need a county package, a PDP package, and so the VR, that's great. You know, there's lots of packages out there, but it's great. And it's really easy to use, user-friendly, and then we could, you know, send our, send reports to the county in a format that works with the state. So, I mean, from a pure practical standpoint, and being able to save the most amount of money, it would take, you know, it would take some work, it would, you know, mean some things for, some new things for Denver to learn, you know, things to work together on, but I have confidence that we work. And I know that there are some local charter schools that are doing their own accounting, and it's working out great for them, when they separated from the county. So I think, taken all together, we'd be looking at about $22,500 a year. So, you know, there's some initial setup things, you know, for some top programs like that. So our initial setup is a lot less than any of the, like Mr. Fiola said, though, you know, the, it's possible that having an outside provider who is, has had no knowledge with the county, or is an official, you know, in terms of objectivity, that maybe the county may be more willing to work with them. One concern that I have is that we have asked repeatedly to have all of our records turned over to us, and they have not been. And I did have a conversation with Mr. Bosom right after the, our meeting, right after the charter assets agreement meeting. And he has committed to being able to get all of those over to us by either the fourth, somewhere between the fourth and the seventh. So that does, that's really going to be, that makes it really tough to have a, you know, a January 1st transition, if it's possible. That makes it really like, a lot of work to do, to make sure that payroll can get out for the first, the first day of the year.
That would, that would be definitely difficult for the back office operation to be in all of the states, correct?
Potentially, yes, yeah. Because I mean, the process is the same for whoever's doing it, you know, the process is the same. The tricky part is that they have not worked with MCOE before, that they, all the those relationships.
I kind of wanted to point, my thinking was actually on two levels. The first level is as a transition, and so I focus strictly on the remainder of the school year, which is a six-month period, that cost effective basis, thinking through the issue. But quite frankly, if it works for us, and if it's a solid way to approach it, we certainly can benefit from that on a cost basis. So that's my perspective. But again, we have to meld that in with the proposal that we're finding out about the back office operation. But for me, it balances related to what they can provide in addition to what we complete with our budget. And if it's not much more, why do we have to pay $35,000? And if we have that amount, we want to continue what we think is a very solid, very reasonable way to approach the system.
This time, I know we had suggestions come from the Hudson, so we'll hear some public comment. And the board, I know we're trying to engage a conversation at this point, but we need to hear it out, and we can respond either through our, through our own comment time, just to keep things orderly and move things along. Who was that comment from?
From Mrs. Ivara.
Yes, Nick?
Could I ask that if, she's an accountant, and she would be willing to do what she just said, would you be willing, willing to work with another accountant? That, I have a friend that ran a private school in Carmel for 21 years, and she has told me that she doesn't mind helping get this going, getting this off, but if you can find a less expensive way to do this, then you can talk to her and see if this could work, between the two of you. I mean, I don't know, I'm just trying to offer, you know, or, she also works for a business that, she said you can talk to her business, her boss, but. When this came up, we were talking, and I had asked her just off the wall, I know that what you've been doing for all those years, and she said she, you know, would you be willing to help? I mean, like everybody else, time is precious. But she said she would, because my grandson is, is her nephew, so she definitely would. But that's, that's out there.
Thank you. Great. Thank you so much. Yes.
Question and a comment. Before the independence move that just occurred, MCOE was doing the accounting and payroll, did they assess Millennium, the charge, and if so, how did that compare to what we're looking at for the private ones? And secondly, just another suggestion out there, I was given the name of one of the financial officers with CSU MB who knows about what's going on here, and may also be willing to volunteer some time to try to help out with that. And lastly, the fundraising effort, I'm on the board of a 501(c)(3) that was struggling, and we reached out to Community Foundation for Emergency Money for helping us to find ways for sustainability and financial sustainability as well. We were able to do that, so I'm just to put that out there. That may not be something that we can attain in the short term, but if there is an interest in moving that direction, a local partnership also with Community Foundation might be helpful.
Thank you very much. Please make sure any information, contact information for that CSU MB contacted with this person, your name, please?
Oh, Denise Strad.
Denise Strad, thank you. Yes, in service.
Yeah, so Linda, I would never question your integrity at all. When I think about, if I were to look at any organization where a board member resigns, that they would then take a position at the school, it looks a little unexpected, and maybe in...
Before the independence move that just occurred, MCOE was doing the accounting and payroll. Did they assess Millennium, the charge, and if so, how did that compare to what we're looking at for the private ones? And secondly, just another suggestion out there. I was given the name of one of the financial officers with CSU MB who knows about what's going on here, and may also be willing to volunteer some time to try to help out with that. And lastly, the fundraising effort. I'm on the board of a 501(c)(3) that was struggling, and we reached out to Community Foundation for Emergency Money for helping us to find ways for sustainability and financial sustainability as well. We were able to do that. So I'm just going to put that out there. That may not be something that we can attain in the short term, but if there is an interest in moving that direction, a local partnership also with Community Foundation might be helpful.
Thank you very much. Please make sure any information, contact information for that CSU MB contacted with this person, your name, please?
Oh, Denise Stroud.
Denise Stroud. Yes, please.
Yeah, so Lenda, I would never question your integrity at all. When I think about, if I were to look at any organization where a board member resigns, that they would then take a position at the school, it looks a little unexpected and maybe a little odd. And again, I would never suggest that that, and nobody here here would. But just from the objective, I think that that could be used as a, I don't want to use the word weapon necessarily, that MCOE may have, but it could be a little near-fun bullet in the arsenal. And then also, when I consider the benefit of experience that a charter management company has, we moved CELtas to a CELTA. For those of you who don't know, a CELTA is an organization that provides oversight to special education for the school, and they make sure the school is being legally compliant with special education law, and that parents' rights are protected. They're a resource, and a third-party resource. We changed, as a school, Millennium Charter changed CELtas in order to benefit from that experience. And while this hasn't, I don't know if you know this, because there's so many more pressing issues, but just by changing CELtas, the school saved $3,000 to $5,000 in special education issues alone, because of their experience. So there are nuances of charter laws, things that charters are able to do, that church and public schools can't, that they're going to know. And that's the kind of education you only get through experience. So I think when making this consideration, we really need to consider the experience and of the individual or the organization that we go with. And how have they been able to save charter schools based on the way they, the information they provide? What kind of information and education and training they provide to staff on physical responsibility and on those ones of charter law in regards to that element? So I think those need to be considered.
And they will be.
They will.
Thank you. Anything else? And back?
Yeah, I would say in that same spirit, in my own words, just objectivity really is priceless. Objectivity is priceless for public reception.
I appreciate that. Anyone else?
I definitely agree with what you're saying, especially if they're offering assistance when it comes to grant writing and finding other funds, that could be valuable to us. I also heard you comment that it would be two different ways to, to employ, you know, to the county for January 1st. I think that's not easy. I mean, that's simple, knowing a day of the year, that should really be a factor if it saves us a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
You shared with us that other charters, you are being there in public health. So do you think, aren't we able to reach out to them and see, will they be successful? How they can support us and even train our staff so that we're able to learn from them? They've probably talked a lot of the same experiences and things, and just charter helps the charter.
Okay. Any other comments? Back to the board for final comments. Mr. Diaz, your question?
Great comments. Thank you. Great comments. I kind of, you know, was thinking in the same lines as you, so, just to, you know, make sure that we protect ourselves as a steward and our board members as well, through, you know, playing devil's advocate. It can, it can look like something else, you know, you know, I don't think there's no dispenion, but as you can see, those, what's, I think we keep that in mind.
So I wanted to talk about the fee that we create to MCOE's business services. It works out to be, it's based on our enrollment, and it's, right now, it's at about 3% of our, of course, 100 students, 3% shows down from there. So we end up paying roughly between 29 and 36, I think is the highest, that we've paid $1,000 per year. So, yeah, so not, so we would have a savings from not paying that. And one of the things that's still on the table as far as our board is concerned is requesting a refund of the business services fee from this year and from last year, since, you know, the services we paid for, you know, accurate time and reporting, didn't happen. So we don't know if we're going to, you know, if we're going to get a refund, the amount of that refund. We do, what we do know is that we won't be billed for their services after February 1st or after January 1st. So that's that. I do think that it would, that it would be best in terms of propriety for someone else to take this on, and even if it's not a charter school, you know, management company, you know, if it's a local accountant or bookkeeper, I think, I think that would be a better solution than, and, or exactly, that's why I haven't considered it really until just now, you know, seriously.
I want to be clear, Lenda didn't bring it up. It was that she was trying to think of solutions. And so I just wanted to be really excited, so I just come in like, hey, I can work these out. It wasn't at all.
Yeah. Yeah, because I don't, you know, I think it could, there could potentially be that con, you know, it could look a little odd, and then, you know, we have to do a little more questions. So, yeah, that's that. I think it would be great to work with another local person. We have reached out to a couple of the other local charter schools, and have a good outcome from that. So keep coming out.
Again, all great comments, and still check our responses, and one of our parents' responses is certainly correct. That's why I thought about it as a transition, something that, you know, we could order, but certainly not one of permanency unless we felt that in fact, if we're doing the situation or, you know, operation in the future. But I will say a couple things, that, that, you know, resigning from the board and then taking a position where it supports the school has been done before, there's nothing illegal about any of that. But I do agree that in fact, in the future, after we get more solid relating to our financial situation, that we again consider expanding and bringing on more expertise, and then continuing to build this in terms of both this expertise and the services right to the parents.
I think that, I agree with everything that's been said, and again, none of the things facing us are very simple. There's no easy answer to any of my real questions. The one thing that I look at, just as a board member, to be really, really honest, is we are stretched so thin as it is. So to lose a board member, even though she would be directly benefiting the school, we're, I call this my free job, and, and I'm struggling just time-wise. And so then to lose a board member, that, that, that concerns me a lot. I would like to, just for the record, clearly state that anybody, the people who have suggested people as interested in helping in some capacity, that we not let those operators slip by. That's really important that we follow up on those and find out in what capacity they are, you know, willing to serve. Because I think that we definitely need more help, for sure. I am intrigued with the back office people because of the fact that they prepare the board packets, they can do grant writing, they do a lot that might actually free up Jennifer to support the student of day-to-day, and to do some of those principalship kinds of things. Nobody knows our students better, and for her to be able to do that important work in face-to-face with her.
Just appreciating the input in terms of resources that might be available through our finance committee, through all these other ways, journey from others. So thank you very much for those ideas, and we've got it down.
Fantastic. I just want to end with the richness of your comments and the awfulness, super valuable. I think the board has heard that. The working group, I think, gosh, we haven't met enough, I think it's really important we do meet, if at all possible, next week, following Christmas, just to take these comments and really chart backorder, and so that we can come back with this group and make a serious recommendation. I think we're going to need one into the hands of this board, maybe even another president to make a decision on that ASAP. This is critical, I think, to our next, to how we respond to the county's many inquiries at this point, and make sure that February is a certainty. I want that known to all of you as soon as possible. And the back office provider and our ability to make sure payroll is guaranteed for our teachers in February is just absolutely critical. So I want to make sure that's a certainty. So working group, if we can do some in the meeting calendary, that's myself, Kat, Lenda, and Georgia regarding a meeting potentially sometime next week, breakfast, lunch, dinner, whatever we want to do. I do work next week, so that's why I'm saying go three weeks. Oh, Kat, are you leaving? Okay. We do some Zooms. You could Zoom from where exotic your tower is.
I'll leave.
Yeah. Good, good, good. So is there a purpose of dates for you for Zoom, or a time that you could think of?
Actually, I'm not leaving until Friday, so people are available.
I'll do one there Thursday.
Wednesday.
No, Wednesday, the day after.
I'll have to, I'll be out of the department for that, because I can't, on Monday.
Wednesday, preferable, what do you get?
Sure.
Georgia, Wednesday? I can do early morning, and I can move on for a week. Early morning? What are we looking, like at 7:30? Would that be good? We could Zoom. Would be a Zoom meeting then? Unless, Georgia, you and I would like to connect, and you can come to my office and Zoom with some guys. Is that working?
Maybe I can send you to your office, Zoom with Lenda.
All right. We could all Zoom. Zoom together. All right. Sounds good. 7:30? We'll get some Zoom with you. All right. Just wanted to make sure we had a next step. So you guys know, we're not, this isn't stopping. We'll just take a brief, brief break during Christmas, and we'll be right back at it on Wednesday. No, you guys know what Zoom means. It's a fun Zoom, but it's a video conference. If you don't have it, it's fantastic to connect with various people live. Okay, we'll move on to item number three. Now, in all fairness to Mr. Nunez, I threw this on the agenda without even insulting him. So if you don't have anything, Mr. Nunez, I completely understand, and I apologize for not calling you.
No, actually, good thing, I did look for my emails. So I kind of saw a little bit of it.
Took a chance.
Yeah. So I did do, I got to look at a couple of things, and, you know, to order a start date, another school foundation date, it's its own, it's going to be, it will be its own entity in itself. I went online, and I found the National School Foundation Association, their website, and basically on there, they have a startup guide, if this is something that we want to run into. First, there's a planning stage, a feasibility stage, it will have its own board of directors developing, you want to develop a timeline of how you want to get this going. Of course, there's anything, there was legal issues that happened that would have to be addressed, along with ethical considerations, and then all the forums that had to go out. So just as a quick snippet of the planning stage, and just kind of basically getting together, starting to find people in front of the community who would like to be on this. I think we have a parent out there that's been on some of these foundations, I think that'd be a good, a good place to start. You know, there are different phases just of the planning stage, just to kind of do this, and I won't read through everything, but just kind of give you synopsis of what's going on. So we would need to identify the need for the foundation, and prospective donors, the initiators, so making sure what is, what's going to be going on as far as the education, the, what would be the format for this foundation, have a design team of kind of where all the little bits and pieces are going to go into this. We need to come up with a statement and a purpose with the objections, objectives for this foundation, specifically where these money is going to be spent. And then what is the goal of the foundation? Is there a certain dollar amount? Is it just kind of certain, please, as an ongoing, getting ongoing charity donations from people? Focus of the foundation is, you know, is it going to be for this school year, is it going to be for ongoing, stuff like that? So those are some of the things, just as a planning stage for setting up a foundation. So it's going to entail a lot of work and a lot of details. So again, one of the things, finding board members, one thing they suggest is, you've got to have people that are connected. You know, as those days mentioned in the past, you know, in order to get some of this money that's around here, you have to know who has the money, and has to be in there to be able to at least start talking to them. So as much money as there is in this Monterey Peninsula and stuff, you know, we have to have the connections, you know. Of course, I've only been here for one, two years in this area, so I don't have that. So, but being able to start a foundation, those are just some of the things we need to think about. I know in the last meeting that we had with MCOE, we kind of proposed, is there a way to maybe do something through the PTO as a short-term type of deal? I think you can do that, but you'll have to have, they'll have to have their own tax ID number, they're going to have to have, become a 501(c)(3) as well, too. It can't be, it can't be piggybacking off of the, off of the actual school itself. So maybe for a short-term foundation, that could be something to do that, but I think it will have some work to do that, to make sure that you get, they do get their own tax ID number and stuff like that, as that goes. So with a short amount of time, that's kind of in a nutshell, a quick, quick sum up of what the, what are the details to start a foundation?
Start with questions, comments, Georgia? Okay. You get that without stripping? I feel you, though, Amy.
So my reflection, when I was involved in the foundation, was that it, there's some time barriers to overcome in terms of getting, you know, getting that tax ID number from the IRS. What kind of time barriers are we looking at?
No, I haven't got a load to the timeline, but that's part, that's part of it, is once you set that up, then the next stage is going into the, into the planning stage, is getting the, developing the timeline, when are we going to get this? That being said, it does, it will take a while to get those tax ID numbers from the IRS and everything else. Now, I briefly read somewhere, somewhere else, if the PTO was part of a different organization, if a PTO organization, and I can go back to my notes and find it, and I can take that to you, they would automatically have a tax ID number through that organization. So, of course, I don't have it downloaded here, other than people work at the office, but there is, there was a caveat to that, so again, a short-term kind of quick fix, that may be something that we can look more into.
Anything else? Mr. Rose Brown? Hi, it's Mr. Hayes. Okay. I had a quick comment question, maybe you can, after that. So it sounds like a longer-term solution. And I did some looking as well, and it is, it takes, it's a process. If everything went well, it would take at least three months to really get going. And we're looking for a short term. And I brought this up in our, in our post, or the, we are our own 501(c)(3), and I think the missing element is a bank account, is the point. So maybe the finance committee, it sounds like that's going to be a step regardless of what we do for other issues, is a bank account. I don't know that we have to wait on a back office provider or any other solution to do that. And so I'd like to ask staff to look into the bank account as soon as possible. In fact, our PTO has a bank account while using our number already, right, our nonprofit status. Because I do believe the GoFundMe, you know, is a way of starting the process of fundraising that will allow immediately our parent community to begin, right? And what I love about GoFundMe... And what I love about GoFundMe is it's a social media platform, so you can share that more easily, all of you can share with your friends, so there becomes a force multiplier, right? And again, doing that before, ideally before Christmas, and I guess my bigger question would be, so we can get it out faster rather than later, is, is there a way to work with PTO to identify very clearly these monies would be used for the purpose of support within business services for Millennium Charter Base School, that be our goal, and see what we can raise over the next few weeks that could support that, because that could potentially be an instrumental revenue stream as we see these other options. And so, if you could look into both those options, Melissa, that would be really great. Hopefully, it's nothing too complex, you know, GoFundMe, again, not very hard to start, and I think as long as we're very clear about the purpose, and this board would support, you know, making sure that those funds went strictly to the purpose, you know, I want to make sure we're as ethical of the use of money as possible, and the parents in this room know that's the goal. Our biggest concern is, we've got to go out and hire some help to get through this, right? People, the very people who are dealing with, we are holding our first strings. So, how do we make sure there's cash, that we have control of from the outset, at least, you know, a few thousand could be a huge, huge help.
My comment I want to make, I want to say really quick, was about the grants, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands, when we did apply for a grant, it has to be approved through the county, and they have to give, because we did apply for a grant, but the foundation that we applied through said that we had to withdraw our application, submit it to the county, the county then would approve it, and it would go to the foundation, and then they would review our application. So, that's part of the problem with getting grants right now, because of the way our MOU is set up, everything goes through the county. So, the direct donations to us, it doesn't go to the county, but any grants that we write right now, everything has to go through the county, they approve whether or not we can apply for that grant, and then we can receive a grant, if we're accepted for the grant. So, those are some things that we have to.
But that hasn't been true of donations to PTO, correct?
Right, direct donations, not grant funding, but direct donations can be directly given, but not any, but grants have to go through that channeling process.
But the PTO can write grants.
Right.
The PTO is not something that can be signed on.
They're not in the MLE, yes. Okay. Any public comment on this item? Yes, sir.
Oh, there's some of those grants that you applied to, are there also competing for it at the county? Different offices?
You got to respond right now.
Anyway, Kat.
Thank you. Good question, please, please, like the question. Yes, sir, in the back, and then we'll come up here.
So, I think the language you said about exactly where the money's going, I think that can be in the details when you scroll down or whatever, but we would need a marketing message. I don't know that business services is a great marketing message for the community, so maybe how about save your only charter schools in the city of Salinas, or something dramatic?
Good points, good points. We'll make sure you have the time.
The one thing that I heard over a meeting the other day was Phoenix Rising. We need to take that tagline and market the school, and that needs to be done either to the PTO, and the committee, and the parents, but really marketing that, and I think I agree with the last person, who was that, marketing this as a business services thing, it's going to fall flat, like, it needs to be marketed to help our kids, and that's something that PTO can do, where PTO has a discretion to do with what they want with the funds. That can be definitely tagged, but I think we need to use our parents who are here right now and ready to help, we need to use our students, they need to use their social media and outlet to the various friends and let them know, say, play, and we learn that this school is not an arts and technology school, school is a school for everything that doesn't fit in somewhere else, and we need to not re-market Millennium, and that's a huge important part about filling this population, we need to reach out to therapists and organizations that are treating other high school students who are being bullied and are suicidal, and really let them know that we're a resource for them to come to and attend. I think that's kind of part of using the parents, because you guys already have so much on your plate, we're into this school, and we have applied, but starting that said committee and really having these people work on getting donations, and if we, as parents, can be given a donation letter that's typed up, that we can blast out either by hand or by email to our friends and family, and put on our social media page, and then also have a separate donation link on our website, so you don't have to go through those monies, they're like, my mom deserves it, things like that. And, you know, have these multiple ways for people to donate, but giving us kind of a template, that maybe we can go in, fill in our student's name, write our name, would be really beneficial, so people don't have to figure out how to, you know, ask their important people in their lives to help, you know, save our kids' school.
Thank you. Any additional comments, yes, sir?
I want to, first of all, to be right, I mean, all of a sudden, as you said, especially about part of marketing our school. Earlier yesterday, I really didn't realize what this school would be. This is not an art media thing. It is a school for students who feel marginalized everywhere else, who may come and get sick. That's what I heard from every student that was in school, and that should be part of it. That's a really important thing. And marketed that way, it's hardly in our opinion. But to say, it's marketing to people, and parents especially, whose kids just don't fit into the regular high school mold, which is why I said, okay, it's really important to do that.
Thank you. I see, and then we'll go to that.
So, as far as PTO, yes, we can, we have to make this on our own. Yes, we can bring the money in through our account, and it would be two separate entities, so our treasure would be, know what's in PTO, raised by PTO, for PTO, and then the other parts would be just for the school, and that now would be given to Melissa, Jennifer, maybe first, in however everybody else agrees to that, and so the separation of money would be able to be there. We could do that. But in the other sense, that before we leave here, I think as parents and audience, that somebody or more than somebody needs to step up today and take on that role of doing the GoFundMe and working with PTO, have in hand, so that these things will be filtered in the grits, because we could, as PTO, we say a lot of things, but we, at this point, we need soldiers, we need to actually follow through. We can't just depend on somebody else to do it. So, we really need somebody to step up today, or a group of parents to say, hey, we want to organize this GoFundMe, how do we get it started? And, PTO, we can help you get you the information you need, the numbers, but I think that we can't leave today hoping that somebody else is going to do it, or put on the back of the board to do it. So, that's just my comment.
Yes, sir.
So, absolutely, for all the previous comments, and it sounds like we could actually have a dedicated marketing group and a separate dedicated fundraising group. We also need to know who all our small business owners are to be involved, either if you have a small business, or if you're close to anybody, if you're friends of a small business, to be involved with the fundraising. I have Kona Ice, so it's a long shot, but I could potentially come up with $5,000. That would involve 100 families, that's why it's a long shot, but I could extend my give back to 50%. I normally max out at 30%. I could do a one-time exception for my kids at 50%, so we can talk more about that. But we need to know who our small businesses are, who all those connections are, because maybe if we come together as a small community and pay for each other's services, that could be a lot of your fundraising right there.
Do you have a comment? Yes, sir.
Kat, counterpoint to the previous two points, I'm actually kind of in love with ideas, this is more of a student-based school, but my thought process is, if we really promote the fact that we have Dean-designed classes, we're going to get those kids either way. Those are the kinds of kids that want that.
Great. Any other comments? Fantastic, final comments, the board will remove on this item. Yes?
I just want to note that a lot of the ideas, especially around the PTO, can't come from the board, that PTO is a parent-led organization, so parents have to set that up, and I'm really excited, that it sounds like there are a lot of parents who are ready to get together right after the meeting and make that happen, so I just wanted to reiterate that it's not a decision that the board can make.
Ms. Gray? Kat?
I just, again, the sort of propriety versus we know, we trust each other, but I'm just wondering about the fundraising through the PTO and the, I'm just a little uneasy about that. I think that we still need to make sure that we have our own bank account, that we have our own way of doing our own fundraising, because I think right now we have a great relationship, it's very open, but I think that just knowing, the future is not something that's available to us legally, and that we want to be able to have the PTO be able to protect themselves, and have us be able to protect the school, and because the board can't direct or decide how that, you know, those funds are used, I think we still need to make sure.
Thank you.
Did we get the gentleman's name? Is it Mr. Gray?
Sorry, who?
Our Kona Ice person?
Oh.
Mr. Gray.
Mr. Gray, Miguel Gray.
Thank you.
So, I'll just end with, you know, echoing Amy's comments and Landa's, all the board can do is let you know, you know, you heard 15K could help us get started with a charter maintenance organization, we're a little uneasy as to securing those funds through our traditional means. And if the PTO did see it in their hearts and wanted to organize around raising some of those funds, it'd be more than happy to receive that. I do, if you guys, if there's momentum in this room to meet after this meeting, as Landa and Amy are sensing, as am I, if we just ask that staff, make sure there's space available for a meeting, do go into closed session following the open session of this meeting. So, that's all I would say, and you guys have given us one way to say thank you all for your commitment. Ah, we generally don't reopen after more comments, but we could make it quick, we have one out here.
I'm also a local business owner, and I'd like to work with the community, too, and I could do $5,000 to help, I don't know if it was 15 or 15, he said right now, but...
15.
Okay. Once you do have the marketing organized and set to where it's presentable, and we can move forward with it, I would have no problem taking it to people that I do a lot of business with that could help with the revenue. I do a lot of work with a lot of close finances and programs and shippers around the valley, so I do know a lot of people would be more than happy to present it to them once it's finalized.
Mark, Bruce, and all.
Can you tell me again, what the 15,000, before we tell us all what you said we need 15,000 right now?
So, that actually is a number, just in a proposal, again, we haven't even decided to go with that proposal.
Oh, that's a higher...
At most, right, that's if we went with a charter maintenance organization that allows us to at least start the contract, right? That would be part of a larger, you know, that wouldn't solve everything, but it certainly at least secures us the ability to move forward, right? We wouldn't say, oh, has that SB 740 check come in? It would allow us that flexibility, and again, that would be huge to have that flexibility, because right now we're not just seeing it, we're still waiting on a check, that's not quite there yet, and it's been, we know it's been coming for months now, where the heck is it? So, for all we know, it could be hidden under, in somebody's desk, we just don't know at this point.
So, and this is an urgent situation, which seems like we're in, why can't that area send out something to the parents to ask each family to donate $100 for this urgency? I understand not everybody can, but maybe half of us can.
Yeah.
And so, it's going to be something, because we need something now, we can't wait till a week or two and we set things up, or we're riding on a month, is what I'm hearing.
Making such a request, and again, I got to close this item, making such a request, we have to be very careful. As a board, we are a public institution, it would be just that, fundraising drive, cash donations, no requirement to give, but this is why we need the money. What we're concerned about at this point, though, is just the ability to receive that money, right? And again, as we've said, we don't have the school, it's, our bank has been the county, so making that ask now would mean checks go there, and we don't want that to happen. So, again, that's part of the work that has to happen, and we can work on that quickly, as I said, I think the finance committee can move forward with some of that through their own work, because that's not about committing to a contract, just setting up a bank. But it's not done yet, and it may take a week or two. So, in the meantime, we know where that capacity lies in the PTO, which is why PTO can move forward with something like that. And again, that also lies within the parents, and that seems to be, right now, our greatest strength and support and energy. And, you know, just to echo Mr. Gray's comments, you know, what I've learned about this parent community is, you guys are incredible, aside from our parents, our students, you guys are incredibly powerful, we have some amazing parents at this school, and I'm just impressed to learn who's chosen to send their kids here. You guys are incredible people in this community, business owners, just giving people, people who I think are really embedded in this community, not just here in Salinas, we're talking all over Monterey County, and so, let's, you know, I think the answer lies within all of you right now, and we'll do our best to support at this point, but thank you for that comment, and we'll move that item as quickly as we can, but for urgency's sake, it really does lie right now with the account PTO has and their ability to accept money. Okay. Moving on to student recruitment, I just want to be cognizant of time, it's already 11:30, and, you know, I do got to get back to work, thank you, but I want to move through this item, so student recruitment, again, another item I threw on, but something I hope you were able to go and thought to as we move into the next month.
My feeling with the student recruitment right now is that we continue to ride the wave of the media, and we've changed the scripting of the media. Some of the stories that have come out have been pretty negative, about, oh, Millennium was free, and some of those, and then the debt hasn't even been substantiated yet, part of it is reputable, in my opinion, but I feel like continuing to get a hold of the media and posting things and saying that we are open, we are fighting, and we are an arts entertainment media school, and that we are here. And seeing, you know, the students that gave their testimonies the other day at the county meeting was huge, you know? It showed the community, there is a school out there for students who don't fit, like Mr. Robert said, the traditional mold of regular high school, that they are different, they are outside-the-box thinkers, and that they need to have a community to come to. And so, everybody that showed up, you've seen their Wednesday, and all of the students giving their interviews to the papers and to the media, to me, that was a huge recruitment tool, you know? So, I feel like we need to continue to ride that wave of having this kind of press and sending out a press release on our behalf that changes the scripting.
Questions or comments from the board?
That's what I totally agree with.
In terms of the media coverage that we've been getting, you know, we need to make some corrections, you know, when you have an editorial, you have a chance to write a correction there. So, yeah, so we need to make some corrections to the facts that have been lying that aren't accurate. And then, in terms of enrollment and recruitment, some of the ideas that we've heard about reaching out to therapists, I think that was a really great suggestion. I'm not sure if I do that, but I would like to see some kind of a plan, set together, fire shop, in terms of how, in terms of what the recruitment timeline is, and how students can do that.
And parents, you need to gather, I'm sorry, that's part of it, is that we, in going out and recruiting, it does take a team, you know, it takes a team of, it takes teachers, it takes students, parents, alumni... It takes a team of, it takes teachers, it takes students, parents, alumni to come out and speak to the people at these regreaves. We also need to schedule an open house night here.
So I'd like to, so I'd like to see that, you know, plan. And I think that would do a lot to these county and also our armerizer and also help parents understand what will they complain.
Oh, no, I think sometimes a community voice isn't even more powerful than words.
I totally concur. I think one thing that we know is that social media is free. And so generating content on social media is going to continue to kind of keep that charm out there. One thing that I noticed is our Facebook page has an incorrect email on it for the main point of contact. So I don't know who has access to update the Facebook page and things like that, but it still has Marilyn's email on it, so that's a huge problem. I think we can sort of have just at a minimum a goal for all of us to post something about the school once a week at least that we put out there. Sort of note to self, you know, a picture of your child, you know, a post, a tweet, whatever that is, to continue to keep the name of the school out there, that we are absolutely open business, that we are accepting new students for the new semester, that this is a safe place. And at the same time, while we say that in some ways that alternative kinds of kids come here, that it is in a lot of ways a traditional high school experience. They are going to leave their A through G requirements. They are going to leave with a regular diploma and certified in CTE areas. Those are huge things. So, and that it is a safe place for those kids. That is a much different idea that we've been looking for. And so I think that generating that content is going to keep us adequate for our needs.
You know, we have to actually start our recruitment, not even a fundraising thing, I think, committee until this fella arrives, right? So we have the beginning of the video that we've already started. We have a letter. So I think we can roll the offer out very easily, very open, right? Raising and recruiting. So, you know, I kind of want to see... We're heading that, so we're a little bit directed and see where we can go. We already have found the answer.
I think you're right. Georgia, I also think parents are ready to roll out their sleeves. And whatever we can do to put that in the hands of our parents and get, I think we've put out the opportunity to meet and come together around that. Maybe at a time when people can, Saturday morning or something with staff, just to support so they can really take the reins and begin moving on this and share with them those videos that were created. Because there's content we can be pushing out en masse, but work with parents to do that, right? I think, you know, this marketing we keep talking about is one, just the way in which we all talk about the school and how we post about the school needs to be. I think we all learned a lot over the last weeks about that.
Well, I still think that also, we should also include more of the students. I think they've had, yes, a minor role in this, but they have shown us that they should be a major player in the time of this. And they're talented.
Absolutely agree. So Ms. Gray, if you could make sure to support this, create an opportunity for parents to get organized. I have some responsibility to appreciate around student recruitment. And again, to all of you who have friends and family in the area of high school age kids, sometimes you have a bad semester and it's a great opportunity to say, hey, there's a small school out there that your kid may really enjoy. And please, your word of mouth means the world to this school and always has. That's why we're so short on marketing because they did an initial push when the school opened and that was it. After that, it was, you ask any parent, how'd they heard about it? You know, maybe they saw an ad, but for the most part, they heard from a friend and that's what brought them here. Any public comment on this item and then we move on. Sure in the back and we'll go to Mr. Gray.
I guess it might be a little out of order, but for power of recruitment, I think like for us, we're a little unsure of where the school is. So if we're to recruit, I think we haven't really discussed anything about are we going to be open in March? And so I don't know if that's on the agenda, but we came because we're unsure of where we are. Is our goal to make it through this year? Is our goal to be a school that lasts throughout time? Is there a look at touch on, I mean, right now is... I'm just not sure what certainty is on where we stand for future.
I wanted to piggyback on that. Oh, I want to ask first a couple questions. Do you think you have access to any video that was taken of a student's testimony? Because those would be great for this school. I love to talk individual students, but some of those testimonials are very... The other thing I want to say is we have built-in, I mean, social media is hugely powerful for our marketing. We have students, you know, built-in marketing, you know, media marketing department. They put together a great, you know, video, they include graphics, video games in it, whatever. And we really, you know, put this school out here, that's what we do. And, you know, they know better than we to how to make something look like something. I think we have a lot of students from social media around here also. Has anybody ever considered maybe temporarily maybe hiring our... Any other comments?
Are we able to go into the schools and share with the counselors the testimonies of our students? Because they feel a lot of the challenges that many of our students have encountered and recommend to those families very basically that they should be avoided. Also, my daughter gave her testimony and she's to hear the challenges that she had with depression before she graduated and how she, the thought of suicide was something that she had ready through her mind. So we got, we sought help. We got her counselor. We took her to a... We're to deal with young people that have suicidal thoughts and they helped me do that. And also her doctor. Are we able to reach out to those, kind of for transition and say, if you have young people who have been challenged in traditional schools so that they can recommend? And it's just a great way to see her doctor know that she comes here and her doctor who loves to connect with her. And so just, I was just thinking, you know, do you see every doctor, school counselors? And we really talk to doctors and share that this is a great place for kids to come and visit.
Final comments for... Tom Mark? Okay.
I just wanted to touch on the website. And I've gone on it a few times before, and they've said things like that as far as events and divisions and stuff like that. I think that's something that, you know, parents will go to that. Not necessarily like a social media right away, you know, they'll go kind of to the website, a little more old school. So, you know, that's something that maybe can be looked at as far as, and also updating the content on there. Maybe the last video was posted not for, and things like that. So that's also another attribute of that. I know that I go to the website or websites when I'm looking at that.
Anything else over here?
Mr. Gray?
Mr. Gray?
I think the key action item now is to start the email list of all the parents that want to do something because what's the point? I don't want, I don't want all of you to get overwhelmed and then we go down anyway. So we really need to know, we really need to start to transition on how we're going to make this happen through other parents.
Any other comments? Final board comment?
I agree with Mr. Gray. Usually when we have a meeting at work, I always like to say, we want to tie it to meetings with what we're going to do now. Instead of kind of shocking, you know, I kind of feel what's going on there. So I'm wondering what's the next steps can take, right? People want to do something, but it's not happening.
I'd still agree, but thank you for your comments. Anything else? I just want to say thank you to everyone for coming out. It's really important that you stay engaged, stay engaged with the school, stay engaged with the students, and stay engaged with this board. You know, we're your voices, which you guys say this, we're going to make our decisions. So I just want to say thank you for coming out this morning and taking the time off.
So in terms of going forward and what our plan is for how long we hope to stay open, we would like to, you know, look beyond the school year. We'd like to say that we're going to be a growing concern far into the future. We don't know that yet. We're trying to figure out how we can absolutely say that. And the key thing to make sure that that's possible is enrollment and recruitment because that's how, you know, our main source of financial support is through state funds based on each individual student. So in order to be able to say, yes, we're growing concerned, we have to come to this type of...
I totally agree. I would never ever want to be put in the position where I'm telling or recommending things to parents for your kids. I mean, that is your decision to do. That being said, I would say that I'm, first of all, really feeling very good to that check of Melissa today. And so far only three, two students have officially dropped from our rolls. I just want to say that every drop is a double whammy in terms of what we're trying to achieve. We're trying to gain students and not lose students. So whatever decisions you make should be always in the best interest of your own child. But also from a board viewpoint, what we're trying to do and achieve here related to consistency and solvency, if you feel as though, you know, this is a place for your kid, then please consider our requests in terms of working with us.
I can speak as a parent of a child who goes here. I have the very same concerns as all of you. I can tell you that my child continues to be involved. In our discussions between the two of us, he's a junior. He said that if it's a matter of even just going day to day, he wants to go through it. So if it means it's open tomorrow, he's coming tomorrow. If it's open next week, he's coming next week. He understood that there are no guarantees in this county. We decided that his safe place and his ability to receive special education services that he has in his ID, that it's worth it to him and it's worth it to us to kind of live with that uncertainty. And so that's the first that we pay, if that helps you at all. And then as a board member, I can commit to you that as long as we feel that there, at least as long as I feel that there is an opportunity to continue to have this school continue, I would...
These kids, they're adults. So I think it's important for us, and I think we, you know, when we talk a lot about the independent driving, it's roles and all this kind of stuff. I think the good that has come out of this is that we're getting to know you as our community and we're getting to know us. And we are not going to stop until the final block that goes down and that's it. We're going to fight for the very end. So thank you for supporting us in this company. Our grandson here too, senior, kind of devastating a thing. So for me, the goal is just here and then work to sustain this school for the rest of our students who deserve to be here. So thank you very much. We're doing a lot to consider that.
So what was your name? Paul, okay, Paul. So Paul, I really appreciate your question and I understand, well, no, I'm not a parent of students here. And Amy, I so appreciate your comments. And clearly I felt for the kids, a lot of the kids in it, but that was the case. There's a new superintendent as of January 1st, Janine Goss, who's assistant superintendent, who we thought we were developing a really good relationship up until October and communications just stopped. We believe they have lots of the current superintendent. The power of your voice in terms of continuing the pressure they felt at the meeting, because they forced them to make a decision they had no intention of making. And I got to tell you, I didn't come out of there, the only victory I felt was the victory of building this community back up. But, you know, they said very little that gave me heart. And obviously doesn't allow us to see her to say to you today, yeah, we'll be open at the end of the year. They did not make that clear and they could have. They had that in their power, right? Instead, they deflected the responsibility and said, fine, you want to handle this? Fine, do it. And they're doing a kicking and screaming, right? The fact that they commissioned for their staff to do a complete review of our compliance with bylaws is bullshit. Because you can do that anytime you want or not. And they're choosing to do it now while we're down, right? Because that's going to be a whole nother sideshow where they're going to be requesting and inundating, and they've already started, our principal with requests to provide reports and accounting of this and that while we're busy trying to serve our students and trying to keep the school afloat.
Yeah, I think the momentum is on, the parent is with us right now. I just don't know how to do it.
So it's real simple, right? She has an email and she has a phone number. You don't want to write a letter, leave her a voicemail. I, you know, my office is right next to the mayor's, right? When he gets 20 voicemails on something, he listens. He has no choice but to. And it drives his decision-making, right? Send her emails, right? I'm not saying she's a bad person, but at the end of the day, she's going to make the decisions, right? That are driving the way this school is, is being hounded by our authorizer ordinance. And so I just needed you to hear that. We can't, I can't even consciously say we're going to be open next month. We don't know yet. There's so much to figure out. But I guess where I disagree with Mr. Diaz and, you know, whether or not we've been talking, that's all we've been talking about here this morning, right? Because as I said before, getting our finances under control and having somebody fighting for us on our finances that can fight with the county is critical. And I just got to tell you, Mrs. Ibarra and Mrs. Lawrence are not enough. Not because they're not capable, they got too many other moves to do, right? If that was their only job, we'd be golden. It's just not, right? So that's what I got. I just need you guys to understand, all these things, we have not wasted our time today. And there are clear next steps for all of you, right? I need you to, this PTO idea, this fundraising, that is no small thing. Put cash in our hands and that'll make us even stronger. And that's really, again, I made the request earlier. I hope you guys get together right after we go into closed session. And that's the end of my comments. And as we go for five and six, I'd like to consider the board that we remove these items just out of time consideration because we still have important closed session items to discuss. And so I'd like to make a motion to remove items five and six just because we've spent so much time on items one through four. Guys, I hope you've gotten something out of this meeting. I really wish I could assure you, like I can assure you, is we will fight as long as you want us to fight. That's plain and simple, right? It's been so tempting and I got to tell you, for us to want to resign at many points throughout this process. But after hearing from your kids, I couldn't, I can't do that. And I won't. So as long as you guys want it, this board will continue to fight, okay? But with your support.
There is a parent client sheet going around at this time. If you guys would like to journey, go up to the Santa Lucia Room and meet as parents to come up with fundraising solutions and things like that, you are more than welcome to go upstairs and use the Santa Lucia.
I do have a motion that items five and six be removed to another meeting. Do I have a second? You have a second? Any discussion or concerns on that item? Okay, yes?
I think they're critical items. I think there are critical items that we need to discuss, so I'm thinking at work I need to call another special meeting.
Well, I agree, and I think we discussed that earlier, none of the other items. We could, we could do that, suggested item, agenda, the next board may need to fix. Anything else? Any other discussion on that item? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you for the announcement, Mrs. Burns. At this time, we will adjourn to closed session. Again, bottom of our hearts, thank you for your participation today.